I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Newburyport School Committee for Monday, November sixteenth. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Here.
Mr. Redden?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Present.
Mr. Menon?
Here.
Mr. Honkiser?
Here.
Mr. Cole?
Here.
And Ms. Paul.
Here. Thank you, Mrs. Kennedy. Could we please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance to the Republic of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Menon now for public comment.
Are you guys set for public comment?
Yeah, we have nobody waiting for public comment.
Okay.
So there we go.
We open and close public comment. Thank you. We have warrants and minutes in the consent agenda. Why don't we do the warrants first?
Sure. There's three warrants. First warrant, I move that the following name bills for Newburyport Public Schools amount in the aggregate three hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred sixty-one dollars and fourteen cents be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second?
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously.
The next warrant, I move that the following name bills and payrolls of the Newburyport Public Schools amount in the aggregate twenty-three thousand, sixty dollars and eighteen cents be approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the school's account. There are no conflicts.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously.
And the last warrant, I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amount in the aggregate six hundred eighty dollars be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second? Do we have one?
Second.
All right, thank you. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. We have an unabridged set of minutes for October fifth. Thank you, Mrs. Kennedy. I honestly have never seen a more thorough set of minutes in my life.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
It doesn't quite have to be that extensive.
We're finding a balance here.
More or less the old way. In between.
Good. So it's such a large set of minutes, we might need two motions to pass it, but do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Some moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any changes?
I actually have a change. It's ridiculous, but on page twenty, Mrs. Kennedy, it says that I said, "We call our buddy Triton." I think I said, "We co-op with Triton." Just C-O, C-O dash O-P. I was wondering about that.
What?
I stepped up on that, too.
Any additional? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. The minutes pass. Thank you very much, Mrs. Kennedy. And I will turn this over to the superintendent or the principal of the high school to introduce our next guest.
Yes, we are very fortunate to have Sierra Leahy as our NHR student rep to the school committee who will give us the high school update.
Hi, everyone. Few updates are that the student council is up and running. There are five executive officers. Norm McElhany as president, Sierra Leahy as vice president, Lee McLeod as secretary, Olivia Dambrosio, sergeant at arms, and Emily Alford, member at large. Topics discussed at our last meeting include a heated discussion on student voices and brainstorming ideas that the council wants to focus on. Students trained last year by the Anti-Defamation League to serve as peer trainers, met last week to coordinate plans for our community, and read using the text, "Just Mercy." Thanks to the NEF and the Newburyport Literary Festival, a book has been purchased for every student and staff member. Through the read, we will engage in dialogue on systemic racism and grapple with the complexities of this topic and its ongoing effect on our country. Last Wednesday was the National Letter of Intense Standing Day. Seven students participated in last week's ceremony. Kelly Dopplon will attend Assumption College. Samantha King will attend Duquesne University. Ellie Shulson will attend Furman University. Lily Spalding will attend Bentley University. Ally Waters will attend the College of Holy Cross. Sydney Yim will attend Purdue University. And Jack Sbedle will attend St. Anselm College. The Clippers sports team had a successful fall season. Every team finished over five hundred. Some highlights from the season include the boys' soccer team tying for their first-ever Cal championship and the girls' field hockey team also winning the conference as well. Additionally, the golf team won every match. Finally, on November fifth, the senior class was able to maintain a dress-up day tradition. Though we were not able to parade through the halls of the school, the seniors met on the field to take part in the tradition. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. Great. The next item on the agenda is held over from the last meeting, which is a review of the student activity accounts. Nancy Lysick is here to ask, to answer any questions, if anybody has any questions. The accounts came in your packet. Are there any questions or discussion?
Where's Nancy?
Nancy's over around the corner.
Hi, Nancy. I just have a couple of questions, just on how things work, more than anything. So we have the high schools, the first one, like the one formatted slightly differently than the NOC, right? Is that how it is?
Yes, they're managed by two different people.
Okay. So I guess the one question, and I presume it's because the trip was canceled, but, or the, whatever Camp Kiev is referred to as. So how does that work? So Camp Kiev, the seventh grade parents pay, whatever the number is, and then they didn't go, but did they get that money back because it didn't happen?
They can be refunded, or it can be carried over. That would probably be up between the parents and the school. So if that child's gonna go next year, the parent might want the money to stay in the account, so they don't have to pay it a second time.
Do they do Kiev for other grades?
It's a sixth grade.
It's just one grade.
It's one, sixth grade.
Is it just one grade?
Yeah.
Then it would be a refund.
So I guess, and just saying, I'm trying to find out what's going on, because nothing's untoward, but I want to confirm. Like, there's twenty thousand dollars in the Kiev account. So I'm assuming that some people donate, so the kids who can't afford it get to go?
Yes.
It just seems like a lot, like how many kids they thought weren't gonna be able to pay on their own to go, but ended up having to be able to go. It seems like there's a lot waiting around for something to happen.
Well, that money will stay in there from year to year if it's not used.
But why wouldn't it be, that's the thing, why wouldn't it be used if I donated money for someone to go and they didn't go?
Well, some people donate money just to put it in the account for anybody who's at need. It's not necessarily labeled for a particular student. It's there in case students need it.
Okay. Because DC is different. You can sponsor a particular child.
Yes. And they could for Kiev, too, but, you know, for the most part, they probably donate to the fund itself for anybody that can't afford to go.
And the cash accounts, is that basically a whole bunch of money that isn't really in separate accounts, but is, we just keep a running tally of, you know, twenty grand for Camp Kiev, X amount for Cedar Dale, and so on, but it's not really in separate accounts, right?
Which account are you looking at, high school?
On page, the...
Oh, you sold the NOC.
I'm sold the NOC. So it says bank accounts, graduate from 2020, grade eight, and then Marley UN, total bank accounts, but then it says cash accounts. So does cash accounts mean that that's in a particular part of our bank and they're just like earmarks for...
It's a total of all accounts. So it's a total of what's in that account.
So it is one physical thing, and then you have a running total of how it's...
Middle school and high school are combined in the account. So there's one savings account, one checking account.
Okay.
So when they pay out checks, that money goes through and gets refunded through the cash account.
Okay. All right, I guess that's it.
Anyone else?
Any additional questions?
Mayor Holliday? Nancy, could you talk about the balances in the high school accounts, the graduating classes, how that works?
Sure.
Large balances there.
Which, in this year, are...
Will you look at, well, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two?
Twenty-twenty-one has a carryover, has a balance. That's this year. Twenty-twenty still has a balance of about nineteen thousand dollars. They didn't get to do a lot of the things that they would normally do. We still do have two more outstanding purchases that will come out of that account before the money is turned over to the offices. Generally, we turn over the funds to the class office within the three months. That's how long they have to collect it. But because of everything that's been going on this year, that's been extended for them to finish out their purchases. And then the funds will be turned over and the account will be closed.
So if a, another question, if, for example, a program like, I don't know, Best Buddies, or say that doesn't run this year, so that account, the money just sits in there and then hopefully it will be reestablished the following year?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless it's a fundraiser for a particular purpose, then the money just stays in that account and it runs with the following year.
Okay. Are there things on this list that you're gonna take off? Like, we haven't done an honors banquet in ten years, I think.
Each year, the accounts have gone through, and anything that's not active has to be closed out. If it's not active for three years, then it gets closed out. Otherwise, it stays as an open account until that third year.
Aren't we taking kids to that honors banquet in, I don't remember where it was, but wasn't that part of the whole?
It's in North Shore Chamber.
North Shore Chamber.
The leadership, yeah, the, you know...
That's not this, though?
No. We used to do a separate, in the gym at the high school, a dinner for all the honor students.
Okay.
I have a question. In the event that a club shuts down or goes, and there are some funds left in the account, what happens with that, those funds?
They will go into unclassified, and then basically, they can be dispersed over all of the accounts at that particular school to benefit all the children that have belonged to clubs. Some of the funds that are in unclassified or undistributed is used for interest. That's where the interest goes as well. But yes, it's, according to the guidelines, the money should be divided up proportionally to the remaining clubs.
In the event, say, that a principal is approached by a group that want to do a club, would that be some funding that would be available to the principal to sort of give them a little bit of a start, like if they want to buy some equipment?
No, because that would not benefit all the children.
Okay. So it just, it gets distributed across?
Yes.
Are there additional questions?
Yeah, I mean, I think on a larger scale, I lumped a bunch of things together. One of them is money that seems left over from things that weren't spent. Obviously, that's a bigger balance left over in this year than other years. And I'm just curious about a process for that, like, I don't know. I mean, I guess the, the, the class, classes are a good example. I don't know if AP testing might be an example, because people who were gonna take tests last year may not take them this year. I don't know what exactly all that money is.
AP testing is used for, to pay the people that run the test. So if someone pays to have the test, to take the test, the money in that account go to pay those people that are monitoring those...
Proctors.
Proctors, yes, they're called.
Okay. And so, having not proctored a test last year, I guess that's what I'm saying, there's, there's now excess money in there, in theory.
Parents could request a refund, or the money would stay in there for the following year.
And then I was thinking about, there's some things on there that seem to me ought to be budgeted, like art lab fees.
For the high school?
Yeah, I think that's where I saw it. Or like, band high school, or band...
The band would probably be for their trip. If the band were to take a trip, or if they were fundraising for a specific item.
So like, the middle school band has eleven thousand dollars in the account?
Yes, the sixth, seventh, and eighth.
That's for a trip somewhere?
I don't know what it's for specifically. That would be up to Brian to notify us of what it's for. When they do a fundraiser, they have to submit details on what the fundraiser is for and what the money will be used for.
Okay. I guess I'm just trying to figure out, in the same way we were talking about, we bring up fundraising, like, what it's for and how much money we're asking of parents. I mean, I've been in the band for, my kid's been in the band for three years now. I don't remember a fundraiser that we've done. So I don't know if we just blow it off every year. I just, I just don't know, and I don't know what it's for. Or like the NOC play that didn't happen last year. I mean, it'd be great to have an excess of twenty thousand dollars in a theater department, but that also sounds like maybe something that should be budgeted. I don't know what, I mean, I know he buys the sets and all those sorts of things. But being that that's already purchased and we still have this money left over...
We budget for the salaries.
What's that?
We budget for all the salaries. So we budget for the stipends, for the people that are running the play, any teacher or staff member that gets a stipend or a salary for running it, we budget.
Yeah. I'm just, it just seems like there's a number of accounts with money that was either raised or collected and seems left over. The ski team going into the season has six thousand dollars, and I'm assuming if they're gonna ski, they pay activities once again? So it'd be last year's ski. I guess I just don't know what to make of a lot of these lines, because we don't really know how the money was raised or what the money's going for. But I, I think about Brian's point, that there's a lot of money that was probably put up by parents to do things last year that are not gonna come around again.
Well, they refunded a number of items, too. I mean, they refunded for Red Sox tickets. They have refunded for...
Senior, the senior class dues.
All the senior activities.
Yeah.
Class dues, some of those were refunded. Prom was refunded.
Like, the German club has fifteen thousand dollars.
We assume that's because they go to Germany.
Yep, it is.
So, but we were talking about international trips last meeting, right? We didn't talk about a trip to Germany being canceled. Right, so it's just every other year? And they're raising money as...
As they go along, yes.
And all of that idea of, I guess I'm still looking at the, the class dues now, again, that money goes back to the class officers?
Yes. In two thousand eighteen, the amount for the closeout was nineteen hundred. In two thousand nineteen, the amount of the closeout was forty-six hundred. Two thousand twenty, right now, the closeout's at nineteen thousand. It should go down. But as I said, they have three years. In two thousand eighteen, they took their money in September, which is about when they usually do. The previous year, it was September. We have to notify them of what they have and what the deadline is for them to collect the funds. We give them time, if they need a little extra time to set up accounts. We would help them with that if they had questions. We'd connect them usually with Institution for Savings, who would help them with it, especially when the bank was at the high school. So, I mean, obviously, two thousand twenty's gonna have a significant amount of money, but maybe they'll pay for their fifth year reunion. I don't know.
Are we giving the parents an option to get that money back, too?
No, that belongs to the students.
The senior class did receive those class dues back for that senior year. So this is fundraising that they've been doing for the four years. But obviously, would defray the cost of all the senior activities that happened. But obviously, with the pandemic, they didn't have many of the senior activities, so this is the carryover for a lot of the fundraising. And then the process of the senior class is, they have to work, we give them a process, our accounting office, what they have to follow. So they go, they have to register and get an employee identification number. They get that from the IRS. Then they go to the bank, they have to open up an account in the name of Newburyport High School, the class of two thousand twenty, or whatever that class is. After they do all of those steps, and they have proof of the account and everything that they had to do officially, then the class officers, that's when the money's released to that account. So it's not released to, to the individual students. It's released to the...
To the class.
To the class. And then they have to have two signatures, and they have to follow all the bank and IRS procedures, so.
And as I said, it's usually a small amount of money, but...
Right.
For two thousand twenty, it will be a significant amount. But it is their money.
Nancy, I just have a question. The, for the class of two thousand twenty, there's nineteen thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars.
Yes.
That is not, I'm assuming that that is, well, I know that I pay for some car washes, so I, I know some of my money's in there. I assume that that is not all money from parents, that that is money from the community as well?
Yes. It's money for fundraising that the schools, the individuals in that class have done. As Sean said, the class dues and the prom money has already been refunded. So this money belongs to the class of two thousand twenty.
So each family, I'm sorry, each family pays eight hundred dollars in dues?
No, two over four.
Fifty.
Fifty dollars?
Fifty dollars per year.
Fifty dollars, two hundred dollars in total.
Correct.
And then that money plus whatever money they raise goes into this fund?
Correct.
Okay. Additional questions for Nancy? Nancy, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a continuing discussion about the NEF naming opportunity, the list that has been provided. Angela, you are here to answer some questions? Okay. On behalf of the NEF, that would be great. So if we want to continue that discussion, and if there are any questions, we can ask Angela.
I just have one. Angela, the grayed out, the things that have already been named, rooms that already have, you know, a sponsor, do we know what that cost initially? Because it's gray, it's just a gray box on the thing.
I'm sorry, Brian, I didn't hear you.
So the, the rooms that already have names, like the gym and stuff at the Brez, those boxes are blank. Do we know what those numbers were?
The NEF has those numbers, absolutely. And they followed the naming list that you got. So you have the naming list for the Brezhnev Hand. The only list that was new was the one for the NOC. So if you look back through that list, you can look at those room spaces, and it would tell you the amount that was paid.
A list other than this version of the list, you mean?
No. The, the version of the list you have, you have one for the Brezhnev Hand, you have one for the NOC Mullen Building, and you have one. So if you went back and you looked at the Brezhnev Hand Gym...
Yeah.
That would tell you the amount that the donor paid.
I know. Just to clarify, if I go back, you mean back in previous years?
Mm-hmm.
Oh. I'm not gonna have one from when the Brezhnev Hand was built, though.
Right, but that list has not changed. The figures on the list hasn't changed. So if you went back for previous years, the list you have would have the same numbers on them as the list from previous years. So it's the same amount of money.
I guess I'm just asking for transparency, that each subsequent year, even after rooms have been named, it would be good if those numbers remained on this list, so I don't have to go, or someone has to go looking for a whole document.
Oh, I see what you're saying, because it's blank right now.
Because it's blank.
Okay, sure.
That's all. Thank you.
I can, I can let them know that.
Angela, is it sort of reasonable to assume that if, if, looking at the Brezhnev Hand list, the playground ages two to five has a figure of fifteen thousand dollars, that that's likely what the figure was for the playground for five to twelve?
Exactly. They tried to make it as consistent as possible across the schools.
But I, I agree. It would be helpful just to know what monies were raised.
Okay, sure. I'll be happy to let them know that.
Any additional questions? Feedback?
Just thank you, NEF.
Thank you, yes. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Sure.
The next item on the agenda are a series of policies that have a very short deadline. I'm gonna turn this over to Dave to walk us through this.
I'll actually see if Angela wants to come back. So, you know, just, just for procedure's sake, Assistant Superintendent Beck reached out and said that the state has mandated that Newburyport has three policies, one for foster children, one for military children, and one for homeless children. And those policies need to have specific language, and those policies need to be part of a packet that's going back to the state on, by December fourth. MASK took that language and created policies. So what's in front of you, I think as I explained in the, in the emails, was, is the new policy for foster children, which we haven't had, the new policy for military children, which we haven't had, and an updated version of a policy for homeless children, which we did have, but it's not the same language. It's the state's mandating, so I don't know what would happen if we decided to vote against the state mandate for a policy, but this isn't a policy that we wrote or really discussed too much. It's just, the state says you have to have this. I also don't know why the state isn't making this a law, instead of saying each district has to create this as policy, because it seems to me like this is a law, not something they're asking us to write as policy. But I wasn't invited to that meeting. So I have no, I don't have the answer for it, which is, I guess why I invited you up. Like, do you know why this is not a law, that, that they're...
Well, there, there are laws around each of these things, and I think what the state is looking to see is that school districts are aligning your policies to that law, and that's why they were very specific about the language that needed to be included.
And like, these also be, these aren't just state laws. These might be federal laws as well.
Some of them, yes. Like McKenney-Bento law, which is the law around homelessness, that's a federal law.
I don't know.
These are, all three of these policies fall under the category of educational stability, and they're designed for students who have a tendency to have a lot of movement involved in their educational process. So they're really designed just to ensure that we're doing everything we can to provide some stability for that population.
Do we currently serve homeless students?
We currently do.
And foster students, I'm sure.
Yes, we do.
And military students.
Military, I don't know if we have any this year, but we certainly have in the past, yeah. And actually, some of this guidance, I'm doing a, a training on Wednesday for all of our administrators, all of our personnel, who enroll students, all of our counselors, who are involved with servicing some of the students in this population. It also includes migrant workers. And we have more and more local farms that also have migrant worker families who are in our area. So these, these bills also protect the, the children of those families as well.
Sheila?
Do you have an idea of numbers of how many homeless students or how many people in these populations we have?
I do, yes. I don't have mine, the numbers right in front of us, but, right in front of me, but our homeless population varies from year to year. I think this year, our numbers are very small. I think we have about five families that are under McKenney-Bento this year. But we've had as many, you know, as the year that we had the, the water problem, say, at Plum Island, you know, families who are involved in any kind of a disaster relief effort fall under McKenney-Bento during that time. So I think that year, we had about fifty-five families that, you know, we were serving under McKenney-Bento. But generally, the population ranges from anywhere from five to a dozen homeless students that were serving in any one year. I'm very happy to say that our numbers are low this year with everything that's going on. You know, we would expect them to be higher, but we really haven't seen too much of that.
Yeah, until the eviction...
Yes.
...start up again after the seven thirty-first.
It is true. I've started to hear from some families recently with concerns in that way.
Pattonville House, but...
No, we've, there's still money there, there were at least rents and mortgages.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, that's.
You know, and we can put more in there if, I'll just keep in touch with me through the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we set it up with Petten Gill for those who are at risk of being evicted.
Great, that's very good to know.
State's expectation is that they will have these policies from us by Friday the fourth. Our next meeting is not until the seventh.
Right.
So if we're gonna approve these, we would have to a, approve these by waiving a second reading.
Okay, I move to waive the second reading of the policies for these three state mandated policies.
Second.
Discussion.
I just have, just a little bit, but I can't imagine any of us voting no on this, but basically they're state or federal laws already. So even if all six of us, seven of us voted no, it's kind of like what Dave was asking, like, what is the point of us having to do this if we, we can't say no to federal law, even if we want to? So I guess I just don't understand the exercise. You know, I'll vote, I'll vote yes, and we can vote it, and I'm just curious, because if we all voted no, we'd be violating federal laws, right, Mayor?
Well, I think part of the problem is that there were issues, particularly in North Shore communities with homeless children and getting them transported to schools several years ago, and so laws were updated and then policies were created across the state to ensure that there's some school district that owns these children. Uh, they were being transported from hotels, some of them had been in school districts but were displaced, but they wanted to continue s- education in the district of where they lost their home. So there, I think that's part of the reason, at least for that one, that that was created to ensure that, you know, kids who, you know, not by any fault of their own ended up being homeless, that there was some protection for their education. So, um, I agree with you, I'm not quite sure why the, uh, military and probably similar to foster children, because they get bounced around a lot too, in terms of where their, you know, um, preference to continue their education and be supportive, so, um.
A lot of the regulation.
Right.
Changed, um, about a year and a half ago around foster care and what constitutes temporary housing, um, and all of those kinds of things. And, um, now there's more of a collaboration encouraged between, um, uh, DCF and schools in trying to figure out things like transportation and determining what's in the best interest of the child around all of our foster children now. So we work through a process when we have a child, um, in foster care to really determine what's in their best interest as far as education goes, where they should attend school, um, what's going to offer them the most stability.
Motion to approve.
Can, can I ask one question?
So we already had a policy for homeless, so are we voting that we're gonna replace it with what Dave referred to?
Yes.
Motion to approve the three policies on foster care, um, children of military parents and homeless children collectively.
We have a second.
Second.
Second, for the discussion. None of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate you rushing that there.
And thanks to Policy for getting it done.
Yes, thank you very much.
Uh, excuse me, Bruce?
Yep.
I just have a question. The, at the last meeting, the NEF naming thing had a possible vote, but then that wasn't on tonight's agenda. Are we supposed to, the yearly yes, this is, we say yes, should that be, should we be voting on that this time?
My understanding is that we're reviewing this policy, is considering a change to the policy that, that would ask us to take a vote, but it.
Okay.
That policy hasn't been spit out yet.
Okay.
But we, we, in the same way that we review the student activities and ask questions about it, we don't, we only approve each activity account when it goes onto the list, we don't.
Okay.
Approve it every year. The next item on the agenda is the summary of the meeting with the NTA president that the superintendent and the mayor had.
Okay, so, um, I'm trying to remember what it was, it was, uh, probably within ten days after we had our, our school committee mini executive session, uh, late Wednesday afternoon, uh, we did a Zoom meeting with the president of, uh, John Sheehan of the NTA, uh, Sean and I. And we, uh, yeah, they had already received the letter, which you had already received, that I had, uh, sent on our behalf, uh, to the AG's office and to obviously the NTA. They accepted our, our findings and even though they got a second email today from the AG's office, and my understanding is that there is not gonna be any further challenge of, um, those four items that they, uh, listed. And, um, the NTA president, in fact, was aware that it was clearly a stretch uh, in terms of identifying open meeting law violations in, uh, two situations. But, um, I think that they were feeling incredibly frustrated with the school committee in general in terms of the way the teachers had been, um, treated and felt disrespected and didn't know how else to sort of, I don't know, just kind of cause a pause, a stop for us to regroup and sort of think about, um, how we've been responding and, um, we had had a school committee meeting since, um, this was filed and, you know, we had made agreements that we would, um, work better in using parliamentary procedure, Robin's Rules of Orders, in, uh, terms of, uh, our meetings. They've already given positive feedback in terms of the way we're conducting our meetings and feel that it is, um, an improvement, uh, moving in the right direction. We talked about the fact that we would do a retreat, that we would work on our norms, and that we would have a, a refresher training on public records and open meeting law, and they were very supportive of that. So, um, I think overall, the meeting was very positive. Um, I think that, uh, they were relieved by the way that the school committee received, um, the information and our response. And, uh, they're hoping that we can continue to build, uh, positive working relationships as we go forward. I mean, I, essentially, I think that's, and we were gonna do a follow-up meeting too, and I think we would do the next one, probably quarterly for the time being, but would like to do it after we've had our retreat and open meeting law training and just report out that, that we've done that piece that we said we would do.
Yes, yeah, that was a great summary, Mayor, and I agree, I think everyone's, um, feeling comfortable and working together again and, you know, I think the whole district was under a lot of stress in, in August, and as things have, uh, settled down, I think, um, you know, as you said, it's, we're moving in the right direction and, uh, it was great dialogue and a good meeting.
I will also continue to try to reschedule for the, is this the third time? This is the third time, having the, uh, a consultant from MASK come in to work with us, to talk with us about the role of the school committee. Uh, we've had that meeting scheduled twice and the pandemic caused it to be canceled both times. So, um, I think that we, you know, we will try to, uh, make that happen as soon as we can.
It, it might be easier to, um, bring in Ms. Dorothy Pressa through Zoom, uh, for all of us, and, you know, that's, uh, to kind of review some of those policies and, and that, so that'd be great.
I think that makes sense, we could do that meeting on Zoom and then do a retreat separate, you know, and depending on where things are in January, when we try and regroup.
Any questions to the mayor or the superintendent? Okay. The superintendent's evaluation update, um, I have, uh, I'm waiting for, for, uh, two more evaluations from, uh, school committee members. I have begun to, i- if I could get those evaluations as Microsoft Word documents, it makes it easier for me to, uh, cut and paste the comments, as you know, part of our process is that every comment that everybody makes is included in the evaluation report as an appendix. And, uh, I, I don't see any reason why, um, we shouldn't be able to do the superintendent's evaluation at the first meeting in December. If I can get those, I should be able to tabulate and, uh, you know, I've, again, I've, with the, with, uh, three of the four that I've got, I've already built the document of comments, so.
Please, please, please get those in, and if you have questions, if you're stuck or have an issue with trying to pull it together, if you're one of the two who hasn't submitted them, you know, very happy to help, uh, and Bruce and I, if you have any, any concerns about completing the form. Tried to make it easier this year, it's still a bear.
Yeah. Item number ten is the superintendent's report, so I will turn it over to Sean.
Yes, uh, we'll just, um, as you all know, we have our medical advisory, uh, team meetings, uh, each week. Our next meeting is on, uh, Wednesday of this week at ten AM. Since our last update, as, you know, our trends, uh, within the school system is similar trends. I've seen an increase, um, not only in Newburyport but on the North Shore, but throughout the state and the country. Since our last meeting, we've had, uh, five, uh, additional cases within the school system, and we've communicated out to all of our families on those scenarios. But of the five, we also have had nineteen, uh, students that are outside the school, that are, uh, through remote, that tested, uh, positive throughout with, uh, would have no impact on the school, uh, system within the buildings. But we, we are seeing an increase of COVID cases, um, you know, throughout, um, the city. So that's something that, that we mon- monitor. Our students and families and staff members have been, I just think, very understanding and, um, regarding quarantining, if they are deemed as a close contact, they've been very cooperative, um, in quarantining. So, um, this will be, uh, topic of discussion on Wednesday, and Dr. Sue with Mike Allard, uh, in our medical team. I'm just really analyzing the data and looking at our trends and seeing what the impact is on the school system, all, all comes into play.
I have a question, Sean.
Sure.
Um, uh, recently, the state, um, changed some of the metrics, so I assume that that will be a topic of conversation.
Correct.
On Wednesday.
So for, you know, when we analyze the, the data, and I, and I've been saying, I'm very fortunate in Newburyport with our medical advisory team, because, um, the, the people that are assisting us, I mean, this is, this is their job and this is what they do on a daily basis, uh, working with COVID, analyzing data and data trends. And I think from, we have our metrics, but I think for all of us, as we analyze our data, it's really taking a look at the cases, increased, but also looking at the impact on the schools. So it's not just, um, the numbers per se, it's really taking a look at numbers and then also the impact on, on the school system. And, um, getting input and feedback, uh, from our medical advisory team has been really instrumental for us, number one, to keep our schools open, and number two, developing the safety, uh, protocols, um, within the school system, so. But, you know, I think the frustration, uh, among many superintendents and on the North Shore is those goalposts keep changing, utilizing the metrics, but for us, and our focus has always been, you know, taking a look at the cases and the impact on the schools themselves, so. I think we have a pretty good process in place.
Can I just add to that too? I think it's really, really important that everyone understand that, you know, the country is surging, but so is the Northeast, there's no question about it. I mean, it was shocking, we had fifty-seven cases in two weeks. We have thirty-seven active cases now, we had four deaths over the weekend. This is, this is really serious. My conversations have, uh, we started regrouping with, uh, uh, my call with the CEO at the hospital, Mark Goldstein, and what's interesting about the current data is that people aren't getting as sick, or maybe they're going for medical care sooner, but they're only staying in the hospital like fifteen days as opposed to thirty to forty-five, they're not as sick going into ICU events. But the really interesting statistic is that, you know, it used to be that, uh, you know, we're finding that the strongest carriers now are youth. And so what's happening is, you know, kids are coming home, we see a lot of kids out there not wearing masks. Skate park is a perfect example, uh, they bring, they get the virus, they don't get sick, but they bring it home to their parents. They start showing symptoms, the whole family is tested, and then they're quarantined. So I can't emphasize enough how important it is that everybody, we need to go back to the kind of precautions that we started when we were all so nervous of this hitting. You know, more hand washing, uh, more sanitizer, face masks, it's, it's absolutely critical for, to help us get through this. And people are also getting nervous because they're starting to have flu symptoms and don't know what it is. So get a flu shot, wear a mask, wash your hands, use sanitizer, and keep away from people as much as possible.
And, and that's what we're learning, the, the household spread is the, one of the big, um, the, the big issues we're dealing with, and also the outside activities, um, not following the protocols and safety protocols. So I think it's, it's really important for parents and guardians if, if, uh, the children and students are participating in those type of activities to make sure similar protocols are being followed that you're seeing in the school systems. And then if, if they're not, I, I would definitely, um, talk to those organizations or the people that are running those organizations and to make sure our safety protocols are being followed, so.
Sean, we're, we're still experiencing minimum to none spread in the school itself?
We, uh, at this time, even though we've had cases come into the schools, um, we have not had in-school transmission. So that's kind of the silver lining, I think, with our safety protocols that we have in place, that we have not had any, um, in-school transmission. And I also believe it's, um, it, it's people within our school system, not only the safety protocols, but working with families and understanding the seriousness of this disease. So when they are considered a close contact, um, you know, following the protocols of staying out and quarantining, I think has also been very beneficial, um, you know, for us.
Can you, um, I think since we last met, the high school, um, increased the number of students who were there, can you just talk briefly about that too?
Yes, um, so the, the benefit of, uh, the live streaming, so many of the high school students have chose uh, to continue with the live streaming up until Thanksgiving, and then they'll let Miss the Wolf know, um, if they're coming back in the hybrid model or not. So at this time, we're under, uh, forty percent of capacity of the, uh, students in the hybrid model. We've maintained our six-foot distancing, uh, in all the classrooms at this time, and, um, that, I think the piece that we're seeing with the, the faculty and also with the students, um, is that sense of kind of that new normal that we have, but the more students that are back in school, especially for grades nine and ten, it's been, it's been successful, um, you know, wi- with those students. The upperclassmen, a lot of the juniors and seniors, um, you know, that aren't involved in activities are choosing to do more of the remote at this time. But that's something, I think, um, it's a great option for the high school students, especially if we have to quarantine, because they're not, you know, as they're following their high school schedule, they're not losing, uh, time, academic time, so.
Any other thoughts that you have, Sean?
No, I, I just, uh, as I said, uh, you know, we have our weekly meetings and, um, it's been very beneficial, I think, you know, for all of us, where not only the medical advisory team, but we also bring in, um, our, you know, union is part of these meetings now, along with our principals, so we're all really on the same page as we're talking about the trends and the trend data, and making decisions, you know, for the school district and the schools. And I think all of us need to understand that, you know, I think the plan that we have in place is we'll ha, we do have the ability to pivot if we have to, you know, pivot from a hybrid model to a full remote or vice versa. Or if we have to pivot one school, uh, we can do that, which, um, you know, it's, it's reassuring if, if we really need to do that, that we can do that, uh, quickly.
Absolutely. Any questions for Sean, Mr. Rudin?
Yeah, I have a question. So we had a number of teachers, do we have any idea of like the number of teachers?
Do we have any idea of like the number of teachers? Was it a twelve-week leave that some of them took?
Correct.
All right, so we're, we're, we're up to eight weeks, right?
Correct. Some of them will be coming back, um, I think in the next two weeks.
Do they have a certain date that they have to let us know?
Yes, yeah. That was all part of the leave.
What was the date? Like, just a couple of weeks before they have to come back or?
Yeah, so when, when they did the leave, the date of return.
Okay.
We, they already have it. So it's, it fluctuates for when the leave was taken, but a lot of the teachers that were on the, um, the COVID for childcare are coming back.
Okay.
Either right before Thanksgiving or right after Thanksgiving.
Okay.
Um, Sean, do we have, do we have concerns about Thanksgiving?
I think we do. Um, you know, so that's why I think it's important to, to meet with, you know, the medical advisory team. As, as we were talking, I think it might have been our last school committee meeting, uh, some districts went ahead and, uh, decided after Thanksgiving, you know, with the college kids coming back and the family travel, they were gonna go full remote, uh, as a district. Two, uh, commissioner meetings, uh, that he's had with, uh, superintendents, they're, uh, really frowning upon that. And unless you, unless the data's driving that decision at this time, um, they would support that, but they're not really supporting a shutdown after Thanksgiving. But, you know, we're, it's something that we're looking at and looking at our data, you know, with our medical advisory team. I know the colleges, uh, are shutting down earlier, uh, because of, uh, Thanksgiving and the holidays and going remote earlier, so I'm not sure if the governor or the commissioner are gonna, uh, change the thought process on that. Uh, but that is something that's, you know, really important. And we will be sending out a, a communication to families regarding the holidays, um, about, um, trying to modify, you know, their Thanksgiving dinners and the family engagements. I think as, as the mayor, uh, was saying, this is, you know, really not the time to have big family gatherings, um, really to, I think for us all, to modify kind of what our holiday's gonna look like. But it is something that we're talking with, with our medical advisory team.
Other questions?
In all that, we can assume Wednesdays, we're gonna keep Wednesdays closed?
For right now, yes. Yeah. The Wednesdays have been very, as I, as I said, I think at the last school committee, very beneficial, um, for us not having to quarantine a lot more students and staff, so. And it's been separating those cohorts of children coming together.
Okay, thank you. Subcommittee reports, um, policy has met?
We met, I mean, I don't know. I sent you guys a pretty lengthy document with a lot of links to things we talked about. I don't know how much. I guess I'm asking, I don't know how much time we want to spend on this. We, we did a bit of a dive into the fundraising policies. We wrote a new policy that Sean's having the legal team take a look at just for, uh, consistency and for any loopholes that we might have missed. In doing that, we came across a couple of other policies that we had to consider. One was about crowdfunding and whether or not we use, um, teacher-driven crowdfunding in the schools. And so that's something we still need to look at. There was a policy that's currently called, let me open it up here, um, Public Gifts to the Schools. There really has nothing to do with public gifts to the schools. So our new policy will eventually replace, uh, file KHA. And we're gonna do away with the, the language in that one. We'll bring that to vote at least. The thing we spent a lot of time on was, uh, I'll just pull it up here. Public Gifts to the, another policy called Public Gifts to the Schools. Cause there's a line in it that says, uh, "In the case of gifts from industry, business, or special interest groups, no extensive advertising or promotion may be involved in any donation to the schools." And we talked about the word extensive advertising or promotion and what that means and what that would a- apply to. We also talked about whether or not this would connect to the, um, NEF naming policy that we talked about earlier tonight. It seemed to me that the, that there isn't a lot of, uh, it seemed to us that there isn't a lot of interest in undoing current practice so that it's better to shift the lang- the policy language to the practice than try to change the practice. Um, so we added a clause in there to the end of this that says without school approval, school committee approval. And I assume maybe we'll vote on this all together in one lump next time. Should we, should we do that?
Yeah, if you think the policies will be written.
Sean, if, if the lawyer has that, has the full policy, we could talk about this all at once, but, you know, we talked about extensive advertising and whether putting a business name on a court or a football field or over a doorway or something like that would be considered extensive advertising or promotion. And whether or not, uh, we were trying to figure out what the original flavor of that policy was, because this says here, "Involved in any donation to the schools." Mr. Reardon suggested we like to just add "without school committee approval", um, which may or may not change what we had talked about earlier. I don't know, but there, there are some policies in here we're just, we're really just not paying attention to. And so, you know, whether or not we want to, we should just, we should make the policy book reflect what we're willing to go, go ahead with. And then we looked at the piece that has to do with naming structures and we did see that there's a spot in there that says that the school committee can also name places in the district, on the buildings, if we wanted to, that we didn't have to, it didn't all have to come through fundraising. That it could, but it doesn't have to. So I, I think we covered, we covered a ton of ground that maybe we should put onto a, its own meeting presentation at some point. Next time.
Um, joint Ed meets next week, next meeting?
Yeah.
Sean?
Yes.
Finances tomorrow morning, Steve.
Tomorrow morning.
And you've already got superintendent's evaluation, uh, report. If there's no other business before us, uh, there's a dollar bill sitting here on the table of our first meeting that shuts down before eight o'clock in the, in the twenty years that I've been on the school committee. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.